I'll call the November eighth school committee meeting to order at six P M. I'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, if you take role.
Kira Thompson?
Here.
Colleen Marcus?
Here.
Nancy Farrell?
Here.
Kathy Leveras?
Here.
Diana Coyne?
Here.
Bob Mancini?
Here.
Mayor Raichel?
Here.
School committee reports. Anyone? Seeing none, move on to approval of open session minutes. We have three from October. We'll take them all as one. A motion? Ms. Farrell?
Move to approve open session minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty, October seventeenth, twenty twenty, and October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Let's not go back that again. Motion is second. Any addition, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none. Ms. Ware, take role.
Kira Thompson?
Yes.
Colleen Marcus? I need to abstain on the first two, but I say yes for the third.
You don't have to abstain.
You don't have to abstain. Oh, okay. Then, yes. Okay. Nancy Farrell?
Yes.
Kathy Leveras?
Yes.
Diana Coyne?
Yes.
Bob Mancini?
Yes.
Mayor Raichel?
Yes.
New business, approval of the high school Irish cultural club's field trip to Ireland in April of twenty-three. Ms. White?
So, our last trip was planned in twenty twenty, and we all know how that went. So here we are again, seeking approval. You should have the itinerary, the tentative itinerary in front of you. So, the plan would be that we would travel in April from the fourteenth until the twenty-first. For those of you who have been around for a while, that's one day shorter than our typical trip because the cottages are extremely busy, and they can only accommodate us for one day less or for the full length. But we'd be able to bring less students because they only have four cottages available for the longer stay. So, Mrs. Sawyer and I opted that we'd prefer to go one less day and allow more students the opportunity to travel with us. Again, you have the itinerary, so I don't need to go through it, but I know that there might be some questions about the trip.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the West Springfield High School Irish Cultural Club field trip to Ireland from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three until April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Farrell?
I was just curious. You had ten to forty students as your possible number of students that would be traveling with you. So, sort of, how is that determined about the number of students that go on the trip?
So, we're an open club, so any students who want to travel are given the opportunity. We've been fortunate that through our fundraising efforts, the cost of the trip is pretty low. So, students are required to pay their airfare and then a small fee in addition. We do try to limit the amount that students have to pay out of pocket through fundraising efforts. So, we do have a grant, the Biggie Grant, sitting in wait for us that's been there for a little while. So, we have the opportunity to help supplement as well if there are students who can't afford to pay the full fee.
And we just had a sister city meeting tonight, and you said there's about twenty-eight students that are planning to go.
So, yeah, so we're between twenty-two and twenty-eight. When I had to submit this, we were a little bit less. But, you know, waiting for the approval has been really hard for some of these students. It's a second generation, if you will, so their siblings were supposed to travel in twenty twenty. But I don't think the kids were ready to fully commit until they knew whether or not we were approved.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Farrell?
And then, what about the chaperones? Do you have a certain number of chaperones per number of students?
So, because we stay in cottages, we, Mrs. Sawyer and I, prefer to have one chaperone per cottage. We do have five male students who will travel this time, and so we'll have one male chaperone for that house, and the rest will be female chaperones. Again, some of these chaperones were supposed to chaperone in twenty twenty, and so they're sticking around to kind of do it now.
Anything else?
So, can I just say?
Do you want to go as a chaperone? Is that what you're trying to get at here?
I'm hoping they invite me if I ask enough questions.
All right.
A little math trick.
So, just so you're aware, the cottages sleep six people. So, it would be four to five students with one to two chaperones. So, Mrs. Sawyer and I like to stay in the same house, so we're sort of command central, but then the other houses have one chaperone.
I'm just curious. When you talked about the open, being an open club, does that mean like any student in the high school could go on this field trip who wanted to?
Yep.
So, what if they didn't participate in the fundraisers? Would they still get the portion paid for it that you don't have to participate in order to get the?
No, so that's a requirement to travel. So, you have to fully participate in the fundraising. And we really, we try to work with families so that each family hosts one fundraiser. So, if it's a bigger fundraiser, then maybe two families are doing it together. So, we'll be doing a savers fundraiser in December. So, I anticipate that'll be pretty big. So, there'll be two families that sort of take the lead on those. The kids were out painting shamrocks today, so we have one parent who was sort of the lead parent for that. So, just every different fundraiser, we really need those students to get involved. And, and really, everyone needs to pitch in a hundred percent. And we recognize that a hundred percent for one student might be different than a hundred percent for another. So, as long as they're putting forth their best effort, it's when you have one student who doesn't participate in anything that it makes the kids' feelings get hurt. Like, I'm putting in all this effort, so we have to pay less and we can have the best experience. So, Mrs. Sawyer and I really work with the students to make sure that everyone understands the importance of putting in their best effort. Yeah.
Anything else?
Have a fabulous trip.
Thank you. Do you want to go? You can't go to the pubs.
I would love to go.
You're not allowed to go to any pubs while you're there.
The sister city will have a different group going if you want to come with us.
You might want to go with his group instead of my group.
Without any further questions, comments, concerns, Ms. Ware, if you take role.
Kira Thompson?
Yes.
Colleen Marcus?
Yes.
Nancy Farrell?
Yes.
Kathy Leveras?
Yes.
Diana Coyne?
Yes.
Bob Mancini?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, presentations. We'll start with the middle school.
Good evening, folks. Welcome. It's nice to be back. Our first presentation is from our students in our creative literacy class. Mr. Cook is the teacher. I know that Ms. Torres is listed on the agenda. She's caught about a COVID. But Mr. Cook is also a creative literacy teacher, and he's going to introduce the program that we've been doing for the last few years, introduce some students to you, and then conclude with Mr. Barkum, a member of the VFW. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cook for a minute.
Good evening. All right, so I'm here to talk about the Patriots Pen. I am a second-year teacher at West Springfield Middle School, and it's something that I've been honored to be a part of. This year was special because we were able to actually have the veterans come into the auditorium, and our students were able to meet with them, ask them questions, and gain insight and knowledge for their essays. So, the Patriots Pen Essay Writing Contest is a local statewide national scholarship writing contest that offers grades six through eight an opportunity to write in response to a yearly theme and receive a scholarship award. For over six years, the West Springfield VFW and creative literacy teachers have collaborated on the Patriots Pen Scholarship Contest in our creative literacy classes. The contest is open to all students in grades six through eight with additional opportunities to write for the Voice of Freedom Scholarship in high school. Annually, the middle school proudly hosts several members of the West Springfield VFW in an effort to connect the middle school students to honorable and active members of society. The interactions between veterans and students are authentic and genuine, and this event typically provides students a foundation for understanding who our veterans are and what they have done for us in our country. This event and the contest itself continuously provides students with experiences that challenge them, expand their horizons, practice good speaking and listening skills, and approach tough topics with respect and dignity. The contest itself builds leadership skills and enhances ownership over content knowledge. It's a collaboration that is very dear to us, so we were really happy to have the veterans come in and meet with the students. We had all of our classes go down each period to the auditorium. We're also really lucky that we have several teachers and faculty that served as well. So, we had them available to ask questions. We had a great spread, which brought in a bunch of food for the students to taste. You know, not the usual food, but they loved it. They got to wear, you know, helmets and see different gear. And they also got to talk to some men and women with some extraordinary experiences and insight. And right away, we could tell how profound that was. We had a lot of students who took that information and just ran with it, and the quality of their essays. Sometimes I struggle because we cannot really help them other than surface level, you know, you know, make sure you capitalize, make sure you put a period there. But this is all their own opinion, thoughts, research, all of that. We cannot help them, so they have to do that for themselves. And, you know, I think Butch can attest to the strength and quality of their writer voice and what they have to say. So, we have some pictures here up on the screen. As we said, it was held in the auditorium on the fourth of last month. We got to meet Sergeant Bob Simpson of the U.S. Air Force, a Vietnam vet. And there's some pictures of students picking his brain. We came up with about twenty guiding questions. Sometimes it's difficult for students to know what to say. So, we came up with some appropriate questions, but also gave them the opportunity, if they had a question of their own and it was appropriate, they could, they could ask that too. So, it really sparked a lot of conversation. And then we met Sergeant Norman Burns, a Marine and also a Vietnam vet. Of course, we, oop, don't want to skip over. Major Sergeant Butch Barkum, U.S. Marine Corps, U.S. Air Force. You're going to hear from him in just a second. As I said, he brought in food packages for them to try, which they were very interested about, and asked for seconds. And then, our own faculty, Marty Wallace was in the Air Force, Kayla Diaz, U.S. Army, Vice Principal Ian Brown, Air Force, and Chuck Dufau was there in spirit. He's a, was a member of the U.S. Navy. And there are some pictures. You see, that's a student of mine, Prejol, wearing the combat hat. Did not want to give that up. And there's Butch doing some sit-ups. A little, a little leg lifts, yeah. So, what I'm going to do now, I thought the, really the best way to, you know, culminate this presentation is to hear from a student or students. This is a student of mine, Emma Chapman, who is also my student of the term. And she's going to read what she wrote to you guys. So, as far as the parameters for the essay, it was, it has to be between three hundred and four hundred words, which can actually be difficult once you get writing to really condense, especially with, you know, this year's prompt was a pledge to our veterans. So, without further ado, this is Emma Chapman's pledge to our veterans.
Hi, I'm, sorry. So, I'm Emma Chapman. I am a seventh grader at the West Springfield Middle School, and this is my pledge to our veterans. So, many veterans coming back from war struggle with their mental health. They could suffer from depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and many more. I can never fully understand what they were going through, but I can connect in some ways. I've had anxiety since the beginning of two thousand nineteen, and it's been super overwhelming. It took control of my life for a long time, and for me, going to a therapist helped me really well. I talked to veteran Kyle Boucher, asking him about his experience from coming home from the Afghanistan war. I asked him what the hardest part of coming back home was. He told me something that I never really thought about. He said the hardest part of coming home was seeing friends you've known your whole life and feeling like a complete stranger. He also said, "I felt like I'd be in a room full of people and just felt like the only person in the room." He told me that after the war, he stayed in the military. During that time, he was fine. Once he got back home is when it was hard for him. He showed me that veterans, this showed me that veterans might just need the support of the people who they went through with. Veteran Boucher told me about the effects of animals and how they can help anyone, like support pets. For when I was super little, I've always loved animals, and I felt connected to them. Ever since then, I've wanted to work with animals. While thinking about my future jobs, I tried to figure out what I could do to work with animals and humans. Physical therapy with horses is what I figured out sounded the best. That right now is my dream job, to help veterans, disabled children, and other people who need the support from a horse. One of my pledges to our veterans would be giving them the support of a horse when I'm older. My other pledge would be counseling and support groups straight away, fast help for the veterans who feel they need it. As Reacher says, shown, many veterans don't even have access to counseling. I think it would help veterans tremendously if they had urgent help, someone or something to support them in their time of need.
Hi, we have actually one more speaker. This is an eighth grader, a wonderful young lady, Madeline Batista. She's also, is a volunteer to read her essay.
Hi, I'm Madeline Batista. I'm an eighth grader at the West Springfield Middle School, and this is my pledge to our veterans. What is a veteran? A veteran is somebody who goes out into the world to protect us. A veteran, a veteran is somebody who risks their lives to serve the country and keep us safe. But what about after all of that? They come home to society and they think, and society thinks they're safe and content, but that's not true. Yes, many veterans are happy to be home and their families and friends, to their families and friends, and away from danger. But there's more to the return than just that. War veterans often suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, also known as PTSD. This means that they experience depression, flashbacks, nightmares, thoughts of suicide, avoidance of locations relating to the event, anxiety or guarded feelings. This is caused when somebody has experienced stressful, frightening, or disturbing events. According to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, it impacts eleven to twenty percent of Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, twenty percent of Gulf, Gulf War veterans, and fifteen percent of Vietnam veterans. It's habitual for veterans because they experience combat exposure, training accidents, mental health issues, and military sexual trauma. These experiences are life-changing and unforgettable. PTSD can also affect the way people feel towards certain situations, whether it's around people or trying to relish in activity. Individuals with PTSD tend to avoid situations that reintroduce painful memories and may steer clear of loud, overstimulating, or crowded establishments. PTSD has affected war veterans for too long, and we need to make sure that they receive the secure needed. I pledge to do my part to combat PTSD for returning veterans by taking the time to listen. Very rarely do war veterans want to talk about their painful experiences, so if they want to talk about that, then encourage them to do so. It can help you get a better sense of what they're going through and how you can help them. An additional way to pledge my commitment to war veterans is to encourage mental health treatments. Doing so can help minimize symptoms to PTSD and also reduce the long-term risk of developing additional mental health issues. Some options for therapy treatments, but it also includes cognitive behavioral therapy, shame therapy, and dialectal, dialectal behavior therapy. In conclusion, PTSD has taken a toll on veterans. It may need to put an end to it. Therefore, we all need to raise awareness of PTSD to help those suffering receive the right kind of treatments to discard any symptoms that might lead to more severe mental illness.
Folks, the list of volunteers keeps on growing. We have a student of Mrs. Torres's, Allye McCarthen, who also would like to read her essay, if you don't mind.
Honoring and celebrating our veterans is a very important thing to do. Our veterans fought for us and our country. They deserve so much respect for just having the courage to leave their families in normal lives to make sure our country is safe and protected. I believe everyone should honor our veterans more than we usually do. I recently learned that our veterans' basic training was very hard to do, and many people didn't stick with it. Over half the people that joined ended up dropping it. At basic training, our veterans learned to always help someone out and never leave someone behind. It was very hard to be deployed overseas, and they couldn't tell anyone where they were going. I also learned that when many veterans came home, they were, they found it very odd. They described that they were both scared and happy to return. They also found it very weird to be home because they weren't always being told what to do in combat, and suddenly they weren't. The veterans I talked to said that pride was everything and that you learn to do things you never thought you could. I can admit, after meeting some veterans and talking to them, I do not do enough for them. I pledge to start appreciating everything they've done and continue to do for us, to change and make sure to take care of the land they fought for. I will do that by not littering and keeping the earth cleaner. Additionally, I will pick up any litter I see. Another way I can change is by thanking them when I notice veterans in daily life. I say, if they say they are a veteran, I will let them share their stories. That is what I will do, is change myself, and I hope you take my ideas into consideration too. In conclusion, making sure to honor our veterans is very important to do. After all, they did fight for us and our freedom. Respecting and honoring them is the least we can do. I pledge to make the world we live in the vision they were fighting for. I wish that you would pledge to our veterans too.
And I just wanted to recognize another student in attendance, one of Mrs. Torres's students, Subhan, if you could just stand up. Subhan was also a part of this and participated. All right, and I'm just going to give the floor to Butch.
Good evening. I am the commander of the West Springfield VFW, and, excuse me, it's been a great challenge to become the commander. These kids are amazing. The sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they ask questions that blow our minds because they don't ask the cuckoo ones. They ask really good questions. I think they've been warned not to ask the crazy questions. But anyways, I have a blank one here. This tells you how they're judged, how they can go. Last year, the young lady who won first prize in the middle school went on to district, and I was there when she came in second place in district. After that, they go to state. They come in first place there, they get another check, so that's three checks. And then they go on to national, where they give up the five thousand dollars in scholarship money. Now, the Voice of Democracy, which I'm having a hard time getting into the high school, but if I can get in there, the grand total prize for that winner all done is thirty-five thousand dollars in scholarship money. But I did it last year with the high school, and I got a whole three people, which is not bad for ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, I guess. But I'm trying to get in there again. I haven't given up yet. I'm going to keep going. These kids this year, they were great. They were very energetic. They were, they listened. They did everything. And as for the little PT there, a couple of them challenged me, and I don't think they'll do that again. I just ran into one Saturday at another speaking I had to do, and she told her mother all about me for a week. And to this day, she's still trying to do what I was doing. She couldn't do it. But other than that, it's been great. It's great to work with them. The kids are amazing. And it's just, I'm very honored to be able to come here and talk to these kids because it helps us just as much as we help them. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Farrell?
Just thank you to the veterans for doing this for our students. It seems like a good experience for the students. We do appreciate your taking your time to come into the schools to work with the students, and hopefully this will take off at the high school too.
Ms. Marcus?
I just want to echo Nancy's sentiments. Thanks, thank you, Butch, and to your group of veterans that presented at the middle school. And thank you to the students that presented tonight. Getting up and speaking in front of us and all the people on television is difficult under, under any circumstances, but your essays were so thoughtful and heartfelt, and thank you so much for coming and sharing.
Commander Barkum, thank you so much for your service and being here, and to everyone, I'll echo the same things. It's really great. I think many times you tend to kind of forget that we have a lot of freedoms, and we do need to protect those. And those of you that have served are, have done that, and it is appreciated by many. I thank you to the kids for getting up as well and, and speaking your truth and speaking the truths of, of the men and women that have, have had to suffer from what they have done and given of themselves. It's very, very thoughtful, very caring, and, you know, the PTSD is obviously a huge concern and issue for, for many in the, in the community. So, my hope as well is that everyone as well can, can take some of these ideas and put them into action. And thank you so much for joining us tonight. I had a question, though. How many kids were participating in the middle school?
We had eleven?
Twelve.
Great.
Twelve essays in. I think when I see the three people who are going to be giving out first, second, and third prize, we give out, we give out five hundred dollars for first prize, three hundred for second, and two hundred for third. So, when I see the kids give that, I think the other kids might want to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, before you all go, we're going to come down and just get a picture with all of you. Pete, floor is yours.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I want to echo the sentiments of being so very proud of the partnership. And while of the partnership, and while it's, it's nice to see the students here, it's even more uplifting to see an auditorium full of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders working through that roundtable and meeting veterans and asking questions and, and learning how to go through that process. It's, it's one of the most wonderful days of the year, and getting a chance to, to acknowledge that heading into Veterans Day just, just seemed appropriate. We've been doing it for a few years, and it's nice to showcase that. Additionally, this evening, I have for you some updates on our accountability progress and just a few other pieces at the close of that about what's new. It's been, believe it or not, I believe, two or three years even since I've been here live to do this, so it's nice to be back. The general recap, the big picture of where we are at the middle school. First and foremost, we're back to normal, which feels great, and, and we're just so excited to be back and operating as we usually have done. We know that access to instruction has been disrupted over the last two and a half years, and what you're going to see is the new baseline data from 2022, according to the state. I'm very, very pleased that we stayed very close to the state average. That showed some dips in mathematics, as you'll see, but it was matched across the state as we go through that. I'm similarly very, very pleased that through all of this, we maintained at the middle school our same school percentile ranking. There was no drop in percentile ranking at all, and we have remained consistent over previous years. You'll note that there is no ranking for 2020, but the pandemic did not disrupt our ranking in any way whatsoever as a school at the 28th percentile. So that's a bit of good news. I know that there are a lot of schools in our area and region where that's not the case and not the information that they're able to present this year. I'm very, very proud that we were able to share that this evening. Our achievement levels versus the state, I know that, that graph has a lot of information on it. This breaks down for each of the tests that we took, and at the middle school level, please remember that at the middle school level, that's the only place where every student takes at least two tests every single year, and in grade eight, they take three. Each student, every year, is tested. And you'll note that it runs the gamut. The piece that I think really, really helped us, if you take a look at that not-meeting percentage, we were better than the state average. We were able to make sure that our kids did not fall into not-meeting expectations at each spot for each test at the grade level. Grade six ELA matched the state average in that particular category. Every other, every other category and test, grade and test, was better than the state average in the not-meeting expectations percentage, and you see that sort of shift up. When we hit exceeding expectations, that's the spot where we were a little bit lower than the state, and I think that that makes a little bit of sense, given about what the instruction looked like over the course of that period of time, going through that. And you can see that at the state level, that number's quite low at the state level as well. Again, a lot of information on one slide. This, this tool is what DESI uses to compare districts that are similar. I know that many of you know that. These are our districts or our, our schools that are similar to our middle school. I'm pleased when I see this information, because schools that are like us, I want you to note that West Springfield Middle School is in the top two. It's actually a tie for ELA performance. Is in the second in math, and third is, third in science compared to schools that are similar to us in our demographics, low-income percentage, students with disabilities, EL numbers and population. Compared to other schools that look like what we look like, we perform extremely well, pandemic nonetheless. And I'm, again, very, very pleased and proud of that. Broke that down by subject. This shows performance of our school against the district and the state, as it's noted on their, the state page. I know it says grades three through eight at the top, so I pulled out on the right-hand side for each of these slides what that looks like, middle school specific. I also wanted to note our participation rates, which were excellent. And you can note in English Language Arts that we are above the state average in ELA achievement level in grade six or eight. Our eighth graders were a little below the ELA achievement level, and again, this makes a little bit of sense. Last year, our eighth graders, it was their first time in a school building for an extended period of time since grade five, and that transition had a lot that went with it, and to be hovering near that state average is certainly a testament to those students. Mathematics, the story is similar, right around state average. As I said, there's a, a bit of a dip, and you can see where we compare as a school towards the state, and on the right-hand side, broken out by average scaled score for each of the three grades in mathematics. Again, a very, very strong participation rate as well in terms of the students who took the, took that exam. And finally, our science in grade eight achievement level. Again, it's pulled out because when we look at that and what DESI presents, it's often grades five and eight together is where they take the science. But no, again, we're right at the state average for eighth graders last year in science, just a point below with another strong participation rate. It's a summary recap of what's our new baseline data going forward. But as I mentioned, it's been a while since we've met, and I wanted to share some of the, the additional things that are happening at the middle school. I think that's important. I'm very pleased and proud. Mr. Peter Lantain is here this evening. He's our new assistant principal at the middle school in his first quarter of the year. He's done exemplary work and done a fabulous job, and is also a West Springfield resident, and had a long career as an English teacher at Belcher Town High School, and assistant principal at Pathfinder High School before coming to join us at the middle school. He's done a wonderful job, and we're very, very proud and pleased to have him. Some new pieces that have come upon us that, some of the good things that have stemmed from the disrupted last two and a half years that I mentioned. Our Library Passions Project course is in year two. The students got a little taste of what it was like to get some choice in selecting their classes when we had our disrupted schedule and clamored for that to continue. We can't always do that at the middle school level, because very frankly, we have a lot of students select PE and not a whole lot of students select health, so we can't always do that. What we could do is find some ways to give them avenues of choice. Our Library Passions Project course is where, in our library, students study the subject of their choice and then need to give a capstone presentation. They learn research skills. They learn citation skills. They learn public speaking skills, which you can see a little bit implemented this evening. And then they need to give a capstone presentation at the close of the quarter that's judged and scored on a rubric. It's a popular course that's done really, really well, that we hope to continue to expand, and it came from the COVID experience of us having to come up with some unique scheduling options for kids, and it was born of that and went really quite well. Our librarian is the facilitator for that. We're in year two of our targeted reading intervention program that has just done quite well. Our I-Ready scores have shown some growth in that. I think what's matched is when you look at the, the students not-meeting expectations performing much lower than the state level. That's, I think, a bit of where we're seeing some of that result, where that had not always been the case previously. Our amazing shake, which many of you have served as judges and, and seen some of those presentations, is in year three and off and rolling. This year's, they, they had an opening challenge where they had to compose an introductory email properly written, not all in the subject line, but using the text box and properly greeted and properly signed, or composing a video where they introduced themselves to, to staff and talked a little bit about, about themselves using proper presentation skills. This month's challenge is around financial literacy and talking with families about their own finance, budgets, savings, that kind of piece, and then doing a presentation about it. The monthly challenges are judged by community partners that are in those relevant fields. So this month's challenge for November will be judged by a financial planner who judges the students, not just on what they said, but also how they presented and how did they go about composing their video. It's a wonderful program that I hope you get to see a little more of as the year unfolds. We've done some great work in rebooting PBIS, some challenges with kids, having them come in and contribute some of our, to some of our programming and some of our recognition practices that have gone really, really well, and taking a lot of time to reteach the expectations of what school has looked like. If there's one takeaway from this presentation, it has been that level of success about reteaching what does it mean to go to school and what are the expectations in school. I will tell you very frankly that this year has been much more settled, much more calm, much more typical, and it's a testament both to our students, but also to our staff, taking the time to not assume anything about our kids, but making sure that we take some time to reteach what that looks like and actually model it and walk them through it. We felt the benefits of that in spades. We have some new programs. Our Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education and our SEBS Behavior Program that are, joined the, the middle school and are off to fantastic starts, each servicing students with special education needs at a very, very acute level. Many that used to be attending school at Cowing, and our SLIF programs services students, pardon, that have come from all walks of the world and are getting their first taste of the American education experience. It's been nice to have those two programs off and running. Those are new since we've last met and talked. Our other needs, we're crowded. Every time I come here, you hear me say that to you. We call them cloffices, our closets that we use as offices. Each, each of them, each of them are used, and that's not necessarily a product of enrollment. Enrollment has been pretty consistent over the years. It's the, the programming needs in English learners or special education that has taken a lot of space within the building appropriately. So our needs around students are about intervention services, mental health needs. I, I think that's no surprise. That continues to be a global, or at least a countrywide problem that kids are facing. Our counselors are working very, very hard to address those. And then those academic needs as we address the, the baseline that we saw from those MCAS scores that I, I mentioned. Our roof is always a, a topic of conversation. I'm very, very pleased to say that I think that they're either completed or have just completed. Any piece of our roof that you walk by that's green has just been redone. Some leaks have just been repaired. Today, during the Professional Development Day, ceiling tiles are brand-new went up. So I know that the roof has been a, a consistent need, and I want to say thank you to you, because the visible and tangible signs of that being addressed are evident now in the building. There's still some ways to go, especially with the flat softer portions, but, but some great progress has been made on our roof, and, and that's been, I want to say thank you to you for making that a priority. My recap is that academics has held steady. Our new baseline is very similar to what the state average is, and no change in our school percentile ranking, landing us among the top of our comparable schools. You know where our needs lie. They revolve around crowding and related referrals like that. I'm very proud of our kids. Our attendance rates are outstanding. Our discipline rates are very, very low. When I refer to that stat, about over 98% of our students in a building of over 900 have never been referred to the office. I say that concretely and with a clear knowledge of that statistic, because we track that using our PBIS data. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing that makes it a very settled place to teach and learn. I'm, I'm really proud of the wide range of programming that we offer. It's a composite program at the middle school. We, we teach the whole student and all of the needs of the student, as it's a transition year, or transition time from being an elementary school student when you arrive and leaving as a high school student when you depart. There's a lot that happens in those three years, and having a composite program is really, really important to us. I, I'm quite pleased. The, the magazine, US News and World, report when they do their rankings of schools and all that, and I know that a lot goes into it, and I know that sometimes that can't always be taken at face value, but that particular publication puts us in the top third of middle schools in the state of Massachusetts. That particular publication puts us as the number three-ranked middle school in the Valley, behind only the two schools from Long Meadow at its most recent, recent iteration. I mention that because that's a, a marker that reflects more than just one assessment piece. It reflects that composite program, and the, the staff and the students at West Springfield Middle School undertake that composite program with great heart and passion and love, and I'm so proud to represent those, those wonderful students and staff. So that's the end of my, my bits of slides. I want to thank you for having me, and, and turn the floor back over to you all.
Questions? Dr. Gillan? Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Pete. I was just curious. You mentioned the I-Ready assessment. So do you use that for reading and math at the middle school?
We do use it for reading and math, and we use it to monitor growth and place students in intervention classes, both in reading and math. We have more intervention classes in reading than we do in math, but we use I-Ready as a progress monitor and an instructional adjustment piece, but also for placement for those two programs.
So for the reading program, that targeted reading that you talked about, is that for all three grade levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students attend that program? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Marcus?
So Pete, I just want to thank you and your staff for keeping the ball rolling through the last couple of years. Not only is the middle school a great place for kids, it's a great place for staff, and that's apparent when you walk into your building. So again, kudos to you and your wonderful staff.
I appreciate that. That's shared. The testament goes to our, our team, for sure.
Anyone else? Ms. Quine?
I'm just hopeful we could perhaps at some point hear some of the amazing shake efforts. I know I've heard that in the past, and it's great. And maybe the Library Passion Project, because I, I just, I look at things from your perspective of the whole student, and, you know, we have like the basics that are learned, but there are all these other skills that are really important when you're ultimately out in the workforce and everything, and you're, you're teaching these skills at such an early age, and it's really impressive, and it's exciting, and I think the community would love to hear from some of these programs as well.
Certainly. Perhaps through, through Dr. Peron, I'll reach out when those presentations are going. And our, sort of our mantra is we, we'd like kids to go through that before it really counts. Your first tough presentation should not be when it's at a college entrance interview. You should have done that at a spot where it didn't count, and that's what we're trying to offer for students.
Dr. Gillan, I really wanted to just commend you and your leadership team for everything you're doing. The, the, the students are an amazing resource that we have, and, and collaborating with the community and bringing the community in and, you know, recognizing and celebrating the, the veterans with the students is just, it, it's awesome work. And, you know, just hearing what those students had to say in their letters and the sentiments that they shared were truly amazing, and the insights that they, that you heard in, in their, in their, their, their essays were, were really inspiring. So I, I thank you for your leadership, commend your team, and just keep doing what you're doing. Keep bringing the community in and showcasing our students, because they are what it's all about. Thank you.
Wonderful kids. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Thompson?
Just congratulations for keeping, you know, streamlined through. I mean, we've seen a lot of presentations, and the state hasn't been, you know, steady, and you guys did a great job. And just to thank you as a parent, that the middle school is a great welcoming place, you know? When you think of middle school and your kid going to middle school, it's kind of terrifying for your first child to go to middle school, and it hasn't been. And as a parent, I just wanted to say thank you, and you and your team have been super welcoming, and my son loves it, and that says a lot for a kid who's not scared to go to middle school. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I just want to thank you for keeping your slide presentation to about 10. Perfect.
Happy to help, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a update on our literacy program. Also about 10 slides.
Actually, if you think...
It's okay if it's 11.
If you think 10 slides is okay, I'm going to beat that. I think I have 10.
You have seven, right?
I have seven.
I just know it was under 10, which according to Google is the ideal number of slides for the folks watching at home to be presenting next month.
Mayor Raichel, if I could just open up with a couple reflections about...
Oh, I thought you were going to correct me on the slide. Thanks, in my case. Yours have been a little long, Neil, so I don't want to hear it, but...
First of all, would never do that. Second of all, no. Yeah, I, I just felt it was really important before Susan shared some reflections about this year that I take a moment just to paint the picture for all of the school committee, the journey we've been on relative to adopting a new literacy program. And before I do that, I just want to start by thanking teachers, Susan. And before I do that, I just want to start by thanking teachers, Susan, Val, you folks for supporting this incredibly significant initiative rollout. The teachers have been tremendous. It is hard, hard work, but they are showing that they are the true professionals, and we are here to really support them in that. So that being said, when I came on board, which was about two years ago, Superintendent Connor at the time was very clear about one of my main responsibilities was to update the current literacy program resources at the elementary level. It had been some time since we had last done that. So that was, in my mind, my top priority. That being said, COVID certainly impacted that to the point where delayed some of the work that we needed to get done. In hindsight, that delay was really almost a gift because what was also happening at the same time is that the state was working to curate resources for teachers to really set all staff up for success. So they created, curate it was called, and that in conjunction with another resource, Ed Reports. It allowed us to very much streamline the process by which we selected and identified high-quality instructional materials, those materials of the highest quality that we can put in front of our teachers and then our students. So from there, we had a tremendous opportunity. And when I say from there, that was really last year. We had a tremendous opportunity to jump into a, it was evaluating and selecting of high-quality instructional materials network that was hosted by the state. We went through a very rigorous process. That process consisted of gathering feedback from staff about what are they looking for in strong literacy instruction and materials? So we were able to create a vision and a set of values that really anchored everything that we did relative to the decision-making process. So from there, we were able to, and when I say we, a committee of roughly 30 stakeholders that was reflected of classroom teachers, reading specialists, school committee, administration, central office. So we were very deliberate in making sure all voices were heard. And at the end of that process, we were able to clearly identify a program that was almost unanimously voted upon as the program to move forward with, which is inter-reading, which is what we'll talk about a little bit more. So thank you for allowing me to take some time to explain that, but I just felt that was really important, that everybody appreciated the journey that we've been on. So thank you, Sue.
Thank you. So I don't know what happened to that title slide, but I'll get right into it. So as you are aware, we're implementing inter-reading as a core curriculum in grades K through five across the district at all of the elementary schools. It is grounded in the scientific evidence base of reading, and it has been, as Neil has said, both evaluated by curate and by Ed Reports as high-quality instructional material. In addition to that, we are administering the iReady diagnostic to all of our students at the elementary schools. Any student who falls below the threshold in the iReady diagnostic for the benchmarking period is then administered the DIBELS subtest for that grade level. So what the DIBELS is able to allow us to do is to drill down to the individual discrete skills that we can then focus our instruction working with students. We're going to talk about that a little bit more. So this is, just briefly, you can look at these as, depending on what your pleasure is, you could call them doughnuts. I prefer to call them those tubes that you float on in your pool on a nice sunny day. But regardless of what you want to call them, what they're showing you is that on the curate report, for every category that was evaluated, inter-reading met expectations. And then for your viewing pleasure at a later time linked there, I linked the whole report. So if you're so interested in reading all the finite details, those are there for you So as of September 20th, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education passed a mandate that all students in grades K to three are to be screened with a early literacy screener. And it has to be an approved DESI screener. And this is to be implemented in July of 2023. There right now are two approved screeners. One of them is DIBELS, the eighth edition, and M-Class Amplify, of which we are using. And the other is called Early Bird, and right now it is only approved for kindergarten. So the exciting news is we are already ahead of the game for where we're headed, and we have the screener in place now for those students who are falling below the threshold and then in the fall for all students. So we have, we know that one of the things for teachers is time is very precious, and we know that to implement a new program, it takes a significant amount of time and planning. And so we continue to work on how we can get more time and more planning for our teachers. But these are some of the things that I wanted to highlight that we have in place right now. So one of the things we have in place is we're working with the Hill for Literacy. We have two implementation facilitators who come in and meet monthly at each of our elementary schools by grade level. And the sole purpose of this is to go through the inter-reading program component by component and help teachers unpack that and begin to feel comfortable implementing the instruction while they're working on the whole program. In addition to that, we have two additional Hill facilitators who will be coming in bi-monthly to run us through some data cycle meetings, so using that assessment data and then driving our instruction using the inter-reading materials. We have had one early release day so far, and on that day, the teachers had a few options. They could choose a lesson planning training with inter-reading coach virtually, or they could choose a navigating the digital platform because everything that comes in hard copy is also available digitally to the teachers. And they also could choose to do some planning on their own. Today, for the professional development day, they had designated two hours for grade level planning. We hope in the January early release date that we will begin to do some cross-district planning, so we'll be able to get the teachers, all the second-grade teachers together, all the first-grade teachers, so forth, K to five, so that they can do some planning together. And then our March professional development day, we hope to be able to train all of our teachers in the DIBELS assessment so that across the district, everybody will be trained. Right now, our reading teachers are trained, and they have been the ones administering the DIBELS. We have a district elementary literacy team, which is comprised of classroom teachers, which are really serving to kind of begin to lead the way in our inter-reading implementation. So they're bringing the needs of the staff members in their building, helping us problem-solve, how can we work together? So that has been really beneficial. And I think those are the things I wanted to highlight. We have some other optional things. We're having science of reading training for all of our reading teachers. We now, I now have had a lot of classroom teachers who've been asking me for science of reading training, so we're going to work on how to do that, and then some administrators. And then there's always optional grade level meetings, PLCs, that I've held as requested at the schools, the individual schools. So our next steps, so we are progress monitoring our implementation, and we realize that there's challenges along the way. And so we are strategizing as a team. We are collaborating with WSEA, with teachers, with administrators, with our consultants, and also with stakeholders. So our professional development is also being adapted as we learn more and more what teachers' actual needs are. What we've also begun to find is just like our students are on a continuum of learning, our teachers' professional development needs are on a continuum of learning. So we're listening to find out what those differentiated needs are. And so one left, well, one left. And so as we recognize the challenges, I also want to celebrate after two months, some of the successes. So we have passionate teachers who are working really hard for our students to really implement this program with fidelity. And so the last side is just some quotes from our teachers on things that they have had to say in the last two weeks especially. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions?
Interactives for you people.
Yeah. A plus. I like reading more than math, so. Questions in the committee? I'm sure you have one, Ms. Farrell. No, Ms. Marcus is first. Sorry. Ms. Marcus is first. It's like Jeopardy.
I actually don't really have a question. I just need to acknowledge, yes, this is really hard work, but this is really important work. And we are tremendously grateful to have someone of your level of knowledge and expertise leading the charge. So I, you know, I have known Susan a long time. I had the privilege of working with her. And, you know, we hit the ball out of the park with having Susan come on board. So thank you, and thank you to the teachers for sticking to it every day because it is, it's hard work.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Farrell?
Thank you. I'm the data person, so.
Really? Yeah, I know.
I would love to see the iReady data by school, by grade level, so that we can see, you know, the percentage of students that are below grade level. I think we, each principal last year came in and had charts for us of it, below grade level. So then we could have a comparison, you know, I don't know when the next assessment is for students, but when the next assessment is. So if you, if, I don't know if everybody on the school committee wants to have it sent to them, but I would enjoy-
You can just email the school committee or WSPS.
I would like to see that if that's possible.
Sure.
So like by school, by grade level, I don't need to have the individual things like, you know, vocabulary things, but just their overall rating so we can see what percentage of kids at each grade are below grade level, at grade level, et cetera. Thank you.
Peter?
So to that point, Nancy, we've been working on that, just that. And the idea was that we would give an opportunity for those who are interested at the next work session to really dig into the data. And it was really your comment, it wasn't even a question, it was a comment, about the correlation, if you will, between MCAS and iReady data. And what was that? So that has been worked on by Val and Susan and, you know, Dr. Guille, and it's, we're ready to do that, so.
That's an excellent background, right? It looks nice and tropical. Beans is like, I want to be there.
Shout out to my family, sorry. Nancy, I can't take you to Ireland. I don't have that chart plan, but we could go to Ocean Beach or something.
Just out of curiosity, I know we talk about iReady a lot and how it works, and this is kind of based off of Nancy's comment, and they don't even answer now, but is there a way for us as school members to log in and see that data kind of as, besides like having to send it to us? And I don't know how iReady works, but like if there's like that, we could dig in. Not that I'm going to really get down to the data, but I'm just curious that we can get ahead of Nancy's questions.
Well, first, the reports that you're asking for, Nancy, those are actually prepared already, so we can share that information. And as far as looking at the iReady data, an administrator account would need to be set up to access that information.
Okay. Do you want one of those, Nancy?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
She only wants math.
Yeah.
Maybe also just a class or a grade at a particular school, you can white out names, with the DIBELS data as well, just so we can see, you know, these are the students that, not the group that scored, and this is, you know, this is how we were able to dig down and really fine-tune the interventions and supports.
Well, I think building off of that too, it's good to see it two months in, but again, it's only two months in. So maybe if we review this beginning in next year, early before winter break or spring break, sometime in April, before the April break, just to see kind of how it's gone from now until then. Because again, I know it is, this is a big change, and it is only two months in, but I think it's good to hear that it's going so well and that teachers like it too, that there's buy-in.
Well, and I think it needs to be said that, and Colleen said it, it's very hard work, it's very challenging work. And, you know, we're meeting with the WSEA, and we're trying to identify how we can support and bring resources to bear to get teachers to where they need to be with their comfort level so that they're able to really get after it in the classroom with their students. You know, but after that last school committee meeting, you know, Val went to all the principals, sat down with them individually, and looked at the data that Nancy was asking about and gave them an opportunity to really understand where those connections lie between MCAS data and the data that was looked at in the spring. So we're ready to make that presentation, and I love the idea of coming back in the spring when we have more data to really get after it together and look at those things.
And maybe what we can do too is build a workshop around kind of the data. I might be absent. Anyone else?
I was just curious, as you guys are all learning and getting used to it and, you know, the comments from the teachers, how are the kids doing with it?
So that would have been a nice slide to add in, so.
You were under the limit too.
I was under the limit. So I've, some teachers, just this week, as I was walking around and meeting with some teachers, I heard things like, my students are using vocabulary words that they've never used before. My students are writing, using this illustrative vocabulary in their writing that they never used before. My students are starting to learn spelling patterns much quicker than they did in the past. My students love the stories. And actually, in my highlights memo this week, one of the teachers actually sent me a picture from her classroom of her students, and they had done an activity where, and this was fourth grade, where they had taken the "uh" sound, like in put, and then the "oo" sound, and they had, they each had, it was like a scavenger hunt, they had all these words, and then they had to match them up, and they had to decide which pattern it went under, and then they had to justify why it went under that pattern. And so I just happened to be walking by, and she flagged me down, wait, wait, come in, come in. So I was able to watch the students go through the activity, and then I had to leave for a meeting. So when they were all done, they said, can we send her a picture? So they, they all got in front of the board with all of the words behind them and sent a picture. So that will be highlighted in the memo this week.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Move on to the superintendent's report. Move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown?
So very briefly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the professional development today, and before Val leaves, and the work that she, that she did with our, with our schools, with our principals, with our teachers. And what was nice to see was we had local practitioners, local instructors, doing some of the trainings. We also had outside vendors coming in and doing the training. We tailored some of the work to meet the needs of inter-reading and the new program. We really thought about, and by we, I just give Val the credit, thought about purposefully bringing to bear the resources teachers need to find success in the work that we're doing. And as I moved around the district today and got into the different, the different activities, I saw engaged teachers, I saw excited teachers, I saw passion for the work that they were doing. And it really, really got exciting to see. And again, credit to you, Val, for the work that you're doing. I know it's a team effort, you know, Dr. Guile was part of that, Susan was part of that. And the principals, of course, were part of the planning of it. And that was one of the things I'm really proud of, the work that was done, to think about the year beforehand and to backwards-design what professional development's going to do this year, what it's going to be this year. But also to take suggestions and take feedback from teachers so that we are able to differentiate and meet the needs as best we can in the time available to us. So I just, kudos to you and the work that was done, to our staff and the work that they did today. And I just, I couldn't be prouder of what I saw.
You want to add anything to that?
I think what made the difference today was getting everybody to think through the professional development and try to get as much input and consideration for everybody participating. So, and ensuring that there wasn't a group left out. So when we mapped it out, we mapped it out by school with teachers of different content areas. And then we kind of went down the map with paraeducators and had lots of opportunities and choices for them. ETLs, our UA teachers, and really trying to take into consideration really what their professional learning needs are, and ensuring that all the leaders in the district were also thinking through this from the perspective of what are our goals as a district, as a school? And what are the individual professional goals? And how can we make this as meaningful and fulfilling for them as possible? So it really was a large group effort. And I think that going forward, we can certainly make refinements to our process. But I'm very appreciative of all the enthusiasm and participation and all the involvement from everyone in the district to let us know what the needs are so that we can customize it to everyone's needs.
And I have to just add on one thing, and I want to recognize Erin Rogers and the work she did with our clerks district-wide. So we had our clerks from 11 Central, from each of the schools, at the library today. And they, they had presentations around attendance, they had presentations around enrollment. We had McKinney-Vento and foster care. And so Erin, just kudos to you for the work that you did to organize that. And I think it was well-received by all of our employees, the paraeducators, as you said so aptly, and our clerks and our teachers. So it was really a great day to be in Westside.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent's Report, Facilities Update. Ms. Farrell's been waiting for this one for two weeks since our last meeting.
Please and thank you. Quickly, school safety and security. We've been going through the lockdown experiences. Just about every school has gone through a lockdown. That experience has consisted of local law enforcement, Christine Beaumont, principals, teachers, students have all done wonderfully. So we're working our way through that, getting feedback, debriefing as we go. That being said, we created a survey. With that in mind, that being, what are the needs when we think of school safety and security? What is it that schools still need? And out of that survey, we were able to identify critical needs. More two-way radios, shades or translucent film in places where maybe shades won't fit or be able to be installed. And card swipes for building access for teachers in particular. The PCC met November first. And coming out of that meeting, the key points are, the Memorial Building Project is on hold. The mayor's office will be working with TBA to get the documents that they have produced to date. These documents would then be integrated into the elementary feasibility study that's being conducted by CBA. And speaking of that feasibility, it is underway. They are cranking, having gone through just about every school that we had identified on that study. Just side note, Coburn obviously was not part of that, and Memorial would be folded in, too. So speaking of Coburn, we are under 100 items left on the punch list. So the team is working on addressing those items. And those are wrapping up. Go graphics, we were able to finalize the color scheme of those graphics, and we're able to move forward either at budget or under budget. Parking lot is on target for being accessible for the wintertime, end of November, beginning of December. They will be able to hopefully open that up for parking. And the initial layer of pavement will be laid, and then the final in the spring. High School Greenhouse is, I would say, and based on my general contractor's sense and eye, should be wrapping up any day now. Panels were being installed, and it actually looks great, if you haven't been over to check it out. It's going to be a really cool experience or opportunity. Capital Projects, that was a question that was posed, where do we stand? So a quick update on that. In terms of completed, the paving at Tatum and Mitneg that was completed over the summer, and projects that are in the process. Currently, we're looking at bids for painting the exterior buildings of Tatum and John Ashley. Middle School Roof, as Dr. Gillen mentioned, making great strides in addressing the needs of the roof. Based on my last conversation with Ben about that, they'll probably be wrapping up for the season and then finishing the work in the spring when the weather becomes nice again. At the same time as, I guess, the whole roof repair at the middle school was going on, Ben was proactive in also advocating for assessments on all elementary school roofs to understand what the needs are. And lastly, the Clark Field turf replacement will be also what's underway this summer at the, at the end of the school year. We would look to get that project going. Currently, the RFP is being created, designed. Side note on that, there's also conversation about doing the track resurfacing at the same time. And there's a conversation about the cost-effectiveness and the efficiency of doing both projects. So that's it on my end.
Questions on facilities? Ms. Farrell?
Have the lockers come in at Coburn School?
Oh, yes, they have. I apologize. Yep.
So just curious, I know like when Coburn opened, they were still kind of working there. So I kind of felt that like it needed to be, have a complete cleaning done because of dust and things. So when everything is done, is there a company that comes in and does a full cleaning? I know we've opened the school already, like if we hadn't opened it, I'm assuming it would. But will they still do that even though we have used the school?
I do not know. I can certainly look into that and get back to the group or the committee on that.
Anything else? Seeing none, public comment? Seeing none. If you haven't voted yet, you have 40 more minutes to do so. You can do so at the senior center or the high school, polls close at 8:00 p.m. Our next televised meeting will be December 13th. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Right, Westside?